Good afternoon and welcome to the Labor and Technology Committee. Oh, with the Government Operations Committee Joint Hearing. Oh, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, do that one.
Did you give me the countdown?
You did already.
Yeah. And today is Wednesday, February 15th. We're on the 3 o'clock PM agenda. We are in Conference Room 224. I'm Sharon Moriwaki, Chair of the Committee. With me are members of not my members here yet. And with me is the Chair of the Government Operations Committee, Senator McKelvey, and your members.
And myself, my Vice Chair here. Oh, and I'm sorry to see you. And Senator Awah.
Okay, welcome. Before proceeding with the hearing, I'd like to make a few housekeeping announcements. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. In the unlikely event that we encounter major technical difficulties during the hearing and thus ended abruptly, the Committee will reconvene on Friday, February 17th, at 3 o'clock PM in this room 224. I'll be reading a list of individual. I'll be reading the testimonies from those who are here or on Zoom and a list of individuals who submit written testimony for the measure. And if you are interested in reviewing the written testimony, you can go to the Legislature's website. The time that we have for this hearing is 90 minutes to accommodate everyone who registered to testify. We will be limiting testimony to two minutes each. The first bill up is Senate Bill 284 relating to information technology. It requires the Technology Services Consolidation Working Group to decommission the OETS data center located in the Kalani Moku building, relocate the entire Office of Enterprise Technology Services data center to a single standalone facility, and use cloud storage for all state data. It extends the working group to June 30, 2028, and establishes requirements for procurement contracts for information technology-related projects. So first up, I have Bonnie Kahakui, State Procurement Office. Bonnie, I see you. Please.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Bonnie Kahakui, State Procurement Office will stand on its written testimony regarding the preference and where it should be placed in the statutes. And we would defer to ETS about the requirements for the cloud systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Jade Bhutai, Department of Labor and Industrial Relations, in support. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Chair McKelvey, Senator Ihara, and Vice Chair Gabbert. Jade Bhutai for DLIR. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure that, among other things, extends the critical work of the Technology Services Consolidation Working Group in which the department has been participating in. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Do we have Doug Murdock, Office of. Oh, I didn't see you earlier.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. ETS stands on its written testimony in support of the bill and recognizes there have been some other changes that we've been consulting on as well.
So you do have the amendments that you have suggested.
We do, thank you.
Just a moment. Okay, I have Rosa White from D.R. Fortress. Please come up.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Members of the Committee. Rosa White, D.R. Fortress. You have received our written testimony in support of the bill with amendments. However, we have one additional amendment after further research. In our testimony, please refer to Page 7, Line 14-15, where we would like to change that line to say, "Not impacted by NOAA anticipated climate-related sea level rise of three feet per input from SOEST, School of Ocean and Earth Science of Technology." After the hearing, we will provide the information on this language.
Thank you.
And available for further questions if you guys.
Thank you. Richard Zhang on Zoom from SERPAC, in support. You're on Zoom.
Hello.
Hi. Good afternoon. You're on. So you will have testimony.
Yes. Dear Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members, I'm Richard Zhang, President and CEO of SERPAC. I'm here to express our support for Senate Bill 284. We have already submitted our written comments, and I'd like to take this opportunity to emphasize a few key points. The decision to determine the standard for protecting state's critical data has a significant impact to the state. While there have been several commercial data centers built in Hawaii over the past two decades, SERPAC is the only one that has achieved a Tier 4 certification, which is a testament of our investment in local engineering, architectural, and construction firms. This investment has not only created local jobs, but has made it possible for Hawaii to be a hub for the digital economy in the Pacific. Given our location in the middle of the Pacific, Hawaii faces unique geographical vulnerabilities, which makes it all the more important to have a high-quality data center to protect our data compared with, you know, most mainland locations. As we seek to diversify our economy, it is imperative that we have a solid infrastructure to support our digital ambitions. We should not compromise on the standard for protecting our state's critical data. We urge you to support Senate Bill 284, and we appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Sorry. Do we have anyone else in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, I have one written comment in support. Christine Sakula from Transform Hawaii Government. Doug Murdock. Oh, before Doug, Bonnie. Bonnie Kahakui from State Procurement Office. Just to clarify the concern of SPO on this bill. So you're saying that the preference that's in Part A of the bill is not placed in the right section of the statute?
Thank you, Senator. Yes, that's correct. There's a preference section in the statute. It's Part 10, and that's where it should be placed as opposed to creating a new section.
And is that the only. So everything else with the bill conforms with 103D if we put that preference in the Part 10?
Well, I still have some concerns, and I think that needs further conversation with ETS about the language itself. As it's written, it talks about all IT projects. It doesn't specify or narrow down that scope. And we also think cloud systems could be very broad in its term. And we're concerned about some of the systems that, you know, the Office 365s and the Adobe's. Are those also going to be impacted by this bill if it's required to have it hosted here in Hawaii?
Okay, thank you. Doug, can you come up here with your amendments and see if we can address the State Procurement Office concerns in terms of it being broad as written? And you have some amendments to clarify that and narrow it down to.
Yes, Senator, we did recommend creating a, including a definition of cloud services consistent with the standard in this, which is 800-145 that calls or calls those services information, or excuse me, infrastructure as a service, platform as a service, and software as a service. So I think if you clarify it to those three things, it does narrow it down some from other IT projects that could be considered, you know, that may not necessarily be in the cloud. And then there is a recognition that we need to do certain things that are software as a service, especially outside of Hawaii, like Office 365 and Adobe eSign, where those things are not going to be available in a software as a service format in Hawaii. So we need to make sure we're open enough to allow that. And then the criteria for the data center and exactly what criteria it has to meet, we're recommending that it be clarified that the IT Consolidation Working Group be allowed to review those criteria and recommend any changes that are necessary in order to allow competition and adequate capacity for what we need to be able to do.
And you also said that Tier 3 might be too specific that if we had it more general, that might broaden the field, I guess, in terms of the consolidation of various equipment and not necessarily being so specific on Page 2, instructing a Tier 3 primary data center.
Right, I think, you know, it's likely that we're going to need to go into a Tier 3 or Tier 4 data center anyway. So that language is okay, but.
Just to make it general at this point in time.
Yeah, to be more general, you could say to consolidate its various equipment into secure and resilient primary and secondary sites.
Okay.
I think, and we've discussed those changes, among others, to generalize the language a little bit.
Okay, and that. One more thing that we discussed is that you mentioned that we should have in at least the preamble that we are looking for adopting cloud computing technologies as you have specified it, hosted physically in the state.
Right.
Okay.
And we also noticed in the preamble area where it talks about the importance of moving out of Kalani Moku. And I just wanted to note that we've already moved almost everything out of Kalani Moku that's critical.
I like that.
Because we want to make sure that all the state's systems can run in any event.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator.
Okay, questions? Any other questions, members? Okay. D.R. Fortress, you had some comments that were, again, this broadening the scope and not having it as a Tier 3. And you also mentioned that you just added the extreme tsunami evacuation zone, again, making it sea-level-rise resistant.
Correct.
And you also mentioned having this continuing connectivity with at least three physically and logically diverse carriers. Can you explain why and what that amendment would do for us?
Chair, thank you for the question. Yes, based on our experience, our recommendation there is ensuring that wherever the state data center is located is ensuring that they are in a network-rich location, at least their primary facility, so that they have a redundant network mesh for connectivity purposes. What we always recommend to our customers is that they have primary and secondary network connectivity options. So recommending at least three carrier options in whatever facility would be located would ensure that redundancy in network options for the state to ensure that if there's a network outage of some sort, whether there be a construction cut of some sort or whatnot, that there would be continuous network connectivity, certainly to ensure all the cloud services that are needed.
And can you explain also your proposed amendment that we not use uptime Institute Tier 4 Design Facility Certification, but instead something more general of enabling concurrent maintenance of upgrades without downtime?
Thank you for that question. Yes, the, our recommendation for that is that that is a non-governmental entity, third-party entity. So instead of using something, since there is no entity that actually measures tier levels, is using something that ensures that the state has operational resiliency during any sort of maintenance or upgrades, just continuous operations versus just using a third-party, non-governmental entity that issues these certifications, when the certifications could change at any time. We know that the Uptime Institute has changed their certification levels and what requirements there are. So rely on something that the state wants to require in the RFPs versus a third-party entity.
And one last question. On Page 7, Line 18 to 21, it has. Can you explain, has not been significantly invested in or has significant ties to any counties listed in the ER Supplement Number 1 to Part 740, Group D or E? Can you explain that, please?
Sure, yes. We, what, our, thank you for that question. Our recommendation there was ensuring that there are no hostile parties, counties, countries, any sort of investments, whether it would be in network equipment, security equipment, or investments in equipment that is from foreign hostile entities.
So EAR is what?
I do not know the exact standing for that.
But this is a standard.
Correct, yeah, that we.
And who maintains the standard? What governmental agency? Do you know?
I was provided this information. I don't know, but I will provide. I will get that information and add it to this.
Something like that.
Sure.
Okay, members, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Senate Bill 20.
All right.
Okay.
We're going to take the lead on this one. We won't bother gabbling it around.
Okay, no.
So, okay, relating to childcare, Senate Bill 20. First up, Keith Regan-Daggs.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members. We stand on our testimony.
Okay, thank you so much. Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services. Okay, we have testimony in support. We have Yuko Cross, Director of Executive Office of Early Learning.
Hi, Chairs and Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. I'm Yuko Arikoa-Cross. I'm the Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL supports in 10th of SB 20 and defers to the Department of Human Services and the Department of Accounting and General Services regarding implementation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have Early Learning Board, Robert Peters, Chair and SEC Representative. Okay, they have written in support. Kalani Werner, State Director, UPW. UPW is in support. And Keo Purielit, Director, sorry if I'm butchering your name. Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. Exclamation point. Written testimony in support, with comments, wishing to have a living wage implementation should we pass the measure. And finally, Francis Pittsir, Individual, with written with comments. That's all we have on SB 20. Is there anybody in the audience or the world of Zoom wishing to testify on the measure? Seeing none, members, questions? I have a quick question of Daggs, of course. Why is the air conditioner broken?
My apologies, Chair.
Real quickly, you know, the bill calls for this childcare service to also be available to the public as well if there's availability space. Does that raise any issues of liability concerns, possibly to the state if that were to be part and parcel of the program in the bill?
Thank you, Chair McKelvey. Keith Regan, by the way, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii. Thank you for having me and thank you for the question, Chair. In terms of liability, I would defer to the AG's office to provide us guidance on that. But because these are proposed to be in public facilities, I would think that they would be available to the public if that was the design or the desire of the state.
So that would be automatically included then, even if it was called out for in the bill?
Again, I would have to defer to the AG's office for guidance on that, but.
Okay, well, hopefully they'll be able to weigh in on that in the future. And then also in the RFP, you know, one of the testifiers spoke to trying to include a living wage provision. Is that something that doesn't need to be specified in the measure? So that could be procured out, right, as part of the 103D procurement on this?
We certainly can include that.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, please, Vice Chair.
The bill says it's for states, it's for state employees and their families. That's correct?
I'm not sure exactly the language which is contained in the bill, but.
Specifically for state employees.
Okay. Then modification would have to be made to the bill to allow for other than state employees.
And so we're not talking, we're not talking about building something. We're talking about using state, you know, deserted shopping center buildings or somewhere where this program could take place, right?
Yeah, Vice Chair, I think, you know, working with DHS or maybe another agency identifying spaces within government facilities that might be repurposed, I think that's the intent.
You picked the right spot, Kapalea.
Yes, but if you read the bill, it says that it should be made available to the public if there's space available.
Right.
It's right in there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? If not, we will recess for decision-making.
Coming back for decision-making on Senate Bill 284. We are reconvening at 3 o'clock PM hearing of the Labor and Technology and Government Operations Committees for decision-making. Let me know that any bill passing out will include the necessary technical non-substantive amendments. First bill is SB 284 relating to information technology. And this is requiring the Technology Services Consolidation Working Group to decommission the Office of Enterprise Services Data Center and relocate to a single standalone facility and use cloud storage for all state data, and extends the working group to June 30, 2028, and establishes requirements for procurement contracts for information technology-related projects. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with a number of amendments. And we're going to add OETS's amendments that the data, in the preamble, that the data center can no longer be brought up to acceptable modern data standards. But add in Section 2, the industry standard for cloud systems to be used throughout this bill. And it's the infrastructure and PAS and SAS systems. It's in the amendment. We are going to add that the working group will be able to make adjustments to the criteria. And we're going to add that part, in Section 1, the local preference is misplaced. It should be under Part 10 of 103D, so we will do that. We are adding some of the D.R. Fortress amendments on resilience and addressing sea level rise, especially using the standard that they got from the University of Hawaii to protect our system. And the concerns raised about the protection from other investments will be in the committee report. And we will conform the preamble to the amendments and add a defective effective date to move this along. Members, any questions? Okay. Yes, you do.
You had mentioned you had recommended amendment that allows the working group to alter the criteria of.
To, as they look at all of the, this is pretty extensive. So as they look at and they see they can or they can modify it as.
Are we delegating our legislative authority by doing that?
There is a working group that we created last session, which is to look at consolidation of all of the.
So they would come back to recommend to us?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So they would have, they wouldn't actually, when they take a vote, it actually does change it? They would have to come back to it.
Right, the bill has a report back to us.
Okay.
So there's recommendations.
Recommending changes.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Questions and any questions?
Not from the side.
Okay, okay, ready?
Yes?
Okay.
Let's make your recommendations.
Okay, we are.
Fire it away.
Okay, based on that.
It's a joint recommendation?
Yeah, well, first we'll do the labor.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Labor Committee will be voting on Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 284 with amendments as noted. Chair Moriwaki?
Aye.
Senator Lee is excused. Senator Ihara is aye. Senator Keith Agarwal?
Yes.
And Senator Favella is excused.
Oh, he's here.
If you're small, I am.
I know. Okay, thank you. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Committee on Government Operations, same recommendations. Vice Chair, Senate Draft 1.
Recommendation is to pass SB 284 with amendments. Government Operations, Chair McKelvey.
Yes.
Vice Chair both sides. Senator Sanwana Ventura, excused. Senator Wakai, excused. Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next measure on the agenda, Senate Bill 20. What we're going to do with this measure is we're going to blank out the appropriation amount and let WAM look at it. Because there's an appropriation, a defective date of 2112. In the committee report, we're going to recommend that as part of the procurement for this program by Daggs, that they look at a living wage component as part of the bid and also to examine any possibility as the measure moves on for liability indemnification issues. Questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, 20, Senate Draft 1.
Recommendation is to pass SB 20 with amendments of the members present for GBO. Are there any no votes or reservations?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awah. Senator Sanwana Ventura is excused. Senator Wakai is excused. Measure does not pass.
Okay.
Okay, same recommendation for Labor and Technology.
Take the vote.
Oh. Is it?
Yeah.
That's on my bill.
What was the vote?
The one on just one childcare.
Two. Oh, in favor, two opposed, in one hand.
Oh, so it's tied.
Two excused.
Oh, so it is a majority, one.
So did you?
Two?
No, two ayes and one no.
It passes then, yeah.
Yeah, it does pass, I'm sorry.
So we can.
That childcare is back everywhere.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, guys.
Good, good.
We knew that.
Calling you up and go, Rob, no more childcare for us, bro.
Okay, so we will.
Okay, we will, we will not vote.
Okay, so for the four members of the Labor and Technology Committee present? Oh, three members.
You're the two seats, you thought it was Paul.
We see you.
Although.
Okay. Of the three members present, any noes or reservations for Senate Bill 20? No, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, thank you. With that, this joint committee is adjourned. Aloha, we're back. We're in the Labor Committee. This is the Labor and Technology Committee. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, and we are on the 3:10 agenda. We are in Conference Room 224. I'm Sharon Moriwaki, Chair of the Committee. With me are Senators Desi Hara and Senator Favella. And before, so we are going to move right into Senate Bill 1311 relating to the repeal of Act 192, Session Laws of Hawaii to 2007. It repeals the act which requires the employee retirement system to divest itself of investments in companies that provide support for genocide in Darfur, Sudan, and provide annual re. in companies that provide support for genocide in Darfur, Sudan, and provide annual reports to the legislature on the status of the divestment. So we have Thomas Williams here from ERS. Please proceed in support.
Well, good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Tom Williams, the Executive Director of Employees' Retirement System, and I'm here to request your favorable consideration of Senate Bill 1311, which as was indicated repeals Act 192, which requires annual reports on behalf of the ERS to the legislature, as well as divestiture of any investments that are made in the Sudan and in particular the Darfur region. Pardon me. The conditions for repeal of the statute have been met, they are established in the statute itself. The Sudan is no longer on the U.S. Terrorism Watch List, and a former president has certified that hostilities against civilians, attacks against civilians have ceased. We have provided these reports on an annual basis since 2007, 16 years, and looking back over the last eight or so years, we have absolutely no investments in the Sudan and anticipate none. While it imposes the modest administrative burden on us, it's an expense to our managers as they have to filter through literally thousands of transactions annually to demonstrate that we have none in Sudan, so we ask your favorable consideration. Of course, I'm available to respond to questions.
So the reporting was done to the legislature or to the federal government?
To the legislature, Hawaii Legislature.
And before 2007, were we investing in Sudan?
I would think not. I wasn't here at the, at the time, and I've not gone back so far, but it's not a region in which a great deal of global investment is made, in particular the types of investments that public pension funds would make, which require, you know, a matter of risk mitigation, et cetera. So my sense is that we were unlikely to have had investments. Certainly, if there were any, they were minimal.
So if we lift this, we would consider investing in Sudan, is that?
It won't be on a ban list, but I've discussed this with members of the investment team, and there's no reason why we would seek investments in Sudan, quite frankly. I don't think the conditions there are still suitable for the types of investments that the ERS wishes to make.
Okay, I'm going to raise any questions?
So which, which criteria was met?
I think it was the first criteria, I think, was related to removal from the U.S. Terrorism Watch List.
Well, it says United States, when United States revokes all sanctions imposed upon the government of Sudan, so did it, did, do you have proof of that?
I don't have it personally. Our research suggests that those sanctions have been.
Can we get a copy of this?
We certainly will pursue that for you.
Assuming that, that actually did happen, then it would fulfill it, yeah.
And the second relates to certification, I think, that was by President, former President Trump, related to the cessation of attacks on civilians.
Right, well, so you're saying the second one was met as well?
Yes.
Can we, can we get that too?
I'm certain, I'm sure we can.
Just our, our own assurances.
Yeah, yes, of course, very reasonable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Next one is Senate Bill 1312. Oh, wait. I think you're up again. It's the clarifies employee retirement systems eligibility requirement definitions for service-connected disability and accidental death benefits. Mr. Williams, you back up.
Chair, Vice Chair, member of the committee, thank you once again for the opportunity to testify, Tom Williams, ERS. I appreciate the opportunity again to request your favorable consideration of Senate Bill 1312, which attempts to clarify the conditions under which service-connected disability benefits are provided to our members. The purpose of our service-connected disability benefit provision is to compensate members who have incurred an accident while in the performance of their duties, accidental death in the performance of their duties, and for the cumulative impact of exposure to occupational hazards. The legislative intent was to provide a unique series of benefits to members of the police and fire departments, sewer workers, folks who were particularly in hazardous occupations prone to injury or inhalation of carcinogens or exposure to noxious gases and the like. But the courts have more recently liberalized, and I say more recently, over a series of years, six or eight years, liberalized their interpretation of what represents an accident. The statute talks about an accident occurring at a specific time and place. The courts have liberalized it to say that accident doesn't have to be a single event, it can be a series of events leading up to something that triggers the final injury. They have defined hazards as not being limited to a specific type of workplace or unique to a specific workplace. They have defined hazards as having to lift boxes or open cans using manual can openers, as opposed to automatic can openers. They've even described a hazardous work site as one in which employer is, is subject to harassment. And so the benefits are being accorded way outside of what the original intent. But why this is important to the ERS is that these benefits don't require any minimum age, so you don't have to be 60, you don't have to be 30, you don't, there's no minimum age, there's no service requirement, you don't have to work for 10 years or five years, not a single year. It provides a benefit equivalent to 35 to 50% of the individual's pay, and they get a return of their contributions, and it's not subject to federal income tax. So increasingly, what we've seen is attorneys are pursuing service-connected disability as opposed to other benefits that are available on the plan, regular retirement, disability retirement, there are accidental death benefits, there are social security disability, and the like.
We have your testimony, so if we have questions, we'll state.
All right, well, thank you for your indulgence, appreciate it.
Thank you. We just have, anyone else in the room or on Zoom that have question, testimony? We have one written testimony from David Fuzu Fukuzawa, individual and support. That's all I have. Members, do you have questions? Mr. Williams?
So there was a lot of words, so. I need a little bit more clarification, so if I'm here right now talking and I die of a heart attack, does any of the benefits, what we're talking about is going to be taken away?
No, this isn't, this does not take away any benefits from existing members.
Okay, so this is for when new members come into the system?
No, it's, no, it's not for new members, it's for, well, it would have to be from the effective date of the, of the law, because the current law allows this interpretation, so this would be post the effective date of this statute, this bill.
Okay, so, no, just want to clarify, because a lot of people's getting confused that we, I'm voting no on this because thinking that you're taking away any of the benefits. I mean, I'm not saying I want to die right now, I mean, right here.
No, 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 no.
Because I never checked the policy anyway, but anyway, that's the reason why I was considering to vote no, because I didn't want this to be taken away from any possible, you know, in case you pass away on this job, this would be taking away any benefits.
No, it will not.
So you, could you clarify then?
Yeah, please.
What, so clearly you're saying the Supreme Court made a decision that expanded it, so if you say what, what exactly the ERS needs, and it's, it's not taking away if somebody dies, what do, do you cover what its intent to cover?
Well.
Why is it so broad that you're coming back to?
The reason we're coming back is to provide a more explicit definition of accident. For example, if you die of an accident while in the performance of duty, you will receive those benefits. But what we're trying to do is to define accident in accordance with the original legislative intent, which, which we believe was an accident occurring at a specific time and place while in the performance of your duty, while on the job. If you meet those requirements, criteria, you get your benefit. So that's not really taking away any benefits, but the courts had expanded accident to include, for example, pre-existing conditions, if in fact you had a history of back deterioration, 15 years' history before you even became employed, and you took a step while you were on the job, and it exacerbated that injury, they would consider that an accident, even though it wasn't the proximate cause of your injury or your condition, and we think that that's a misread of the legislative intent.
So does that, does the broad coverage affect our status of IRS or our unfunded liability, or what, why are you saying that this is a better definition than the original?
Well, again, we think it narrows it and it focuses back on the group that it was intended to protect, police, fire, and others who might be in really truly hazardous work conditions. It doesn't affect our IRS status, at least not to my knowledge, but it does affect our unfunded liability, because it requires us to pay these benefits that are fairly generous, 35 to 50% of pay without age, lifetime benefits, and a return of their contributions. So I won't call it free, but those create a liability for the system that's unreimbursed by contributions.
So this is for retirees?
No.
Is it for employees who then get hurt on the job and they have to retire? How does the ERS cover that?
Chair, that's a good question. This is not, not for retirees, this is for active employees, and there are benefits available to employees who become injured on the job, but they primarily result from workers' compensation. We have some unique retirement benefits that are available, but they are available to this more limited group, quite frankly. We have disability retirement benefits that are available to all members who meet the age and service requirements, but these have no requirements in terms of age or service to become entitled.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Like right now, I get an injury that I had from high school, and I fall down and I die. That will cover it because the injury was.
If you die on the job, I believe, I mean, you've got accidental death coverage. If you.
So it's on the job.
So it's not, this isn't related to your high school injury, right? I mean, no, this is not detracting in any benefits that members currently have or should have.
So if you could stay there and if I could ask Department of Labor to come?
Can I? So has, has any of the first responder unions seen this? Do you have, do you have a sense of whether, what they, they're okay with this?
I have not inquired, but I would think they would, because this certainly focuses the benefits, it does not detract in any way from that, that's the group who the legislation was intended to support, and the first.
Greatest certainty on your part.
Absolutely.
So could we just have Labor Department on workers' comp, just in terms of looking at what workers' comp covers, what ERS covers, and to clarify. Okay, can we have Department of Labor, please? Hi, could you clarify for us the difference between workers' comp and what Mr. Williams is saying is broader coverage than what ERS covers, which is defined as to on the job, and what workers' comp covers, so that we know that employees are covered, so like if he falls down?
Yeah, okay, so Joanne Videnhart, Disability Compensation Administrator, and so thank you for that question. So workers' compensation is wage replacement, if you pass away on the job doing the duty of the job, there is wage replacement benefits, and so that is different than the ERS. And so that is, the employee has the right to retirement services, which is different and outside of workers' compensation. So for workers' compensation, if you passed on the job, we would be looking at if any of your dependents receive wage replacement that you provided financial support for. And so totally different from wage replacement and your retirement system.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation and clarification. Okay. Moving on to SB 1385 relating to the wage in our law, expands the coverage of employees and employers covered under the minimum wage, overtime, and record-keeping requirements of Chapter 387. By deleting from the definition of employee, employees guaranteed a monthly compensation of $2,000 or more. We have Tommy Johnson from the Department of Public Safety, was supposed to be here in person, anybody from PSD? Okay. Jade Bhutai, Department of Labor, support.
Aloha, Chair Moriwaki, and committee members. Jade Bhutai for DLIR, thank you for scheduling this administration measure to provide more workers with protections afforded by the minimum wage rate, overtime rates, and record-keeping requirements that exist for employers and employees. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, anyone else in the room or on Zoom? Okay, we have written, number of written, quite a number of written testimony. Mike Golou from Rainbow Family Support, Family 808, in support. Tui Anna Scanlon from IATSE 665 in support. Mizahiga from Democratic Party Hawaii Labor Caucus in support. Will Karone, Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support. I think all of these are in support. Chris Coffield, Democratic Party Hawaii Education Caucus. Chris Coffield representing Inua Alliance. Larry Alfry, individual. Elizabeth Hansen, individual. Roger Hanson, individual. Tommy Red Milovich, individual. Marsha He, individual. Shay Chan Hodges, individual. Will Karone, individual. Randy Franz, individual. And Nate Hicks, individual, all in support of this motion. Any questions? Mr. Bhutai, Mr. Bhutai, could I just, a number, quite a number actually, of the written testimony are saying that they want to have the definition to, that is, make the minimum wage. Can you tell us what this deleting, the definite, the guaranteed compensation of $2,000 from the bill, will that, of all employees, or can you address the concerns of written testifiers wanting to have language in there that, that they should be paid up to the minimum wage?
Because right now, the minimum wage is at $12, and if you were to do a calculation of, you know, 12 times 40 times for, you know, for weeks, that would be even, you know, that would be less than, you know, the 2,000 is less than the minimum wage.
But their language is this, and they all say the same thing. It says, we believe deleting the fixed amount is an acceptable solution, but it suggests adding language such as, so that delete the amount equal to the monthly earnings of an employee who is compensated at the minimum wage rate pursuant to Section 387-2. Would that, would that do what you want, want to do, I mean, cover all employees? Just need some clarification for these.
I think it doesn't, you know, a lot of, I think it would be simpler and fairer if, if, you know, it doesn't matter your salary, if you're, if you work overtime, you should be paid overtime.
But, but is your, is your recommended amendment to delete that, that whole guarantee of $2,000, would that cover all employees, and if you struck that, rather than taking it to a minimum wage rate?
If you don't mind, Chair, that's Cheryl.
Also, because it's just.
Yeah, we can track.
She's our, she's our Wage Standards Administrator.
So can you, can you announce yourself and then?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Cheryl Lee, with, on the Administrator for the Wage Standards Division. So the guaranteed compensation, if an employee is guaranteed whatever amount it is, they would be exempt from the minimum wage and overtime law, including the record-keeping, which is the time records. So if you eliminate the two. So if you eliminate the 2,000, this law would apply to employees if they're not exempt under the 387 law to have overtime payment if they worked overtime.
But this would cover everybody then? If you struck this language of a guaranteed compensation of $2,000? Is that correct?
But there are exemptions under 387.
Yeah, yeah, with the other ones. But not, we're talking about that language that says, add a guaranteed compensation to only 2,000 or more dollars a month, whether paid weekly, biweekly, or monthly. That is what you want excluded, right? That's what your, your, your bill is saying.
Right.
So if you struck that and you've seen testimony from others that say they want to include the pay to the minimum wage, that would restrict it, right?
Yes. So if, if the minimum wage is in there, then overtime wouldn't apply? Because they're making at least the minimum wage.
So, so by striking this and not having it pegged to minimum wage, then you're applying to all employees and whatever their wage is?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. So that this language is better than some of the testimony, a lot of testimony.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next bill is Senate Bill 460 relating to food banks. Appropriates funds to the Office of Community Services to fund the purchase, storage, and transportation to food banks in the state. Is Giovanni Delacruz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Moriwaki and members of the committee. Giovanni Delacruz, the Executive Director of the Office of Community Services. We stand on our written testimony in strong support on the intent of the bill. And also like to highlight that we've offered comments and recommendation on our testimony. And I'll be here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Is Amy Miller Marvin.
Aloha Chair, members of the committee. I'm Amy Miller Marvin. I'm the President and CEO of Hoi'i Food Bank. And we are in strong support of Senate Bill 460. We stand on our written testimony, but I do want to just mention a few things. One is that we are in a really critical space for food insecurity right now. One in six residents of the state are food insecure, including one and four children. That is actually the second highest rate of childhood food insecurity in the country. We are serving 50% more people than we did prior to the pandemic. And those numbers continue to tick up. And what we're hearing from folks who are in line is these are people who have always been able to make ends meet. They're working. And because of inflation and the cost of food, they're just unable to make it work. And they need to ask for help for the first time. And we, we believe that these numbers are going to continue to go up with the upcoming SNAP benefits clip fall off and those kinds of things. As demand is rising, we are also seeing some of the supports that let us get through the pandemic start to fall off. So many of the federal support programs, federal commodities numbers are going down. Our, our corporate donations, our retail donations have started to fall off. And also philanthropy has started to decrease. So we really need these funds. We've been so fortunate to have the State Emergency Food Assistance Program as a pilot this year in partnership with OCS. And the continuation of this program would be really, really important for us. So thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Oh, good question.
And maybe someone else can answer. What, what ballpark appropriation amount do you recommend?
So last year, 2 million was appropriate for, for all four counties. This year, we are hoping for 3 million.
Are there grant aid applications in on those two?
No.
Okay, so rely on, so in the bill, it doesn't name organization?
It does not, no. Yes, it would be to support food purchase.
That should clear, I imagine the Deputy AG on this would clear it. So it's a, you know, it's not a, yeah, it's not a grant aid. Usually, yeah, so are there only four? Is there one on each island?
There's, there's one on each island. There are two food banks on Kauai. And there, and there are other, you know, other organizations, but...
It's not a way to get around GIA's?
No, no, I mean...
They could have interpreted that way, if there's only one in each.
Yeah, no, no, no. I think there is an open RFP process for the current program. And we apply, just other organizations apply to.
Good, all right.
Yeah.
So how does, how does it work now with the GIA? We're talking about, there's an emergency food assistance program. And there's a methodology that you mentioned. So is it, does it go to the counties? Or, so it doesn't go to directly to food banks, right?
The funding goes to OCS. And OCS goes, yeah, allocates dollars to each county, yeah.
So in your, in your testimony, you also say that, you know, you don't want to go out to RFP because it's going to take longer. But if there is a connection with the counties so that you don't have to go through a GIA or go out to RFP yourself, then what is, what is, how have you done it in the past with the past assistance?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Chair. I would be happy to provide some information. So currently, the Office of Community Services administered this federally funded emergency food assistance program funded by the United States Department of Agriculture under Food and Nutrition Services Division. What it is, is that it, it provides an annual allocation per state, a food allocation purchasing. So you can see it as a buying power of the state. Roughly in about more than, little above $1 million a year. So this is to allow the state to purchase USDA food, mainland food. And then we, then get distributed to the food banks. So what it is, Chair, is the federal program provides in the Code of Federal, 7 Code of Federal Regulation 251, or Part 251, a definition of food bank, which within the Office of Community Service use as a basis to request or trigger SPO 150 procurement exemption for the food banks. And then we allocate the administrative portion using the small area income percentage.
So what is the procedure then, this 251 for your exemption? That is in federal law, state law?
State law, yes.
So if we use that, because you have in your testimony, the procurement...
That's right, that's, yes.
But we can exempt you according to whatever that law is in state law?
Yes, Chair. This would require food banks to be named, the intended recipient.
So how would that work? So that the exemption would then go to you, to straight to the food bank? So you don't go out to RFP?
Yes, so the bill would have to name the recipient.
But we don't name recipients.
Who decides about whether to grant the exemption or not?
It's SPO, Senator, yes.
And are we talking about the legislature doing it? Not really, yeah.
No. So what it is, is that, so, so if, if the entity is named on the bill, for example, or a definition of criteria is set on the bill that the food banks qualified on. So that will be the basis for the procurement exemption.
You need to give us that language right away, what that is? So that we can either put in a committee report or put in the bill so that it's clear that you don't go, you're exempted by law for going to the food bank. So you can get that distributed quickly. And the idea is that you need to get it out without having gone through the long process.
What was the language used last year?
For, for, so last, last year's, we had to, because there is no basis for procurement, OCS had to RFP the, and that takes, yes, indeed.
But you said there is already...
There is, there is a federally established definition of food bank under the federally food funded program, TFA.
Supply to us and we can...
I'll gladly do so, Senator. It's 7 CFR Part 251.
We don't have time to defer, so can you do it? Can you, can we just?
As a matter of fact, I have printed the definition.
Okay. So that's what we need because, you know, that's to make sense to go out and RFP. Something you need right away. Okay, so, so we will add that language into the distribution via whatever that is.
May I have it? Yes.
How much time would it save? How long did it take last time?
Well, for procurement, it takes about two to three months.
So that's where we're at.
That's, we, we cut down, we give the, we provide the service to those who are in need.
So this is Part 250?
That's, that's the Code of Federal Regulations, Senator.
So it's a federal?
It's a federal regulations, yes.
So we will try to decipher this. That we will use the, this is on the Department of Agriculture.
The USDA, yes, federal.
US, so USDA, I don't know how to put it in the law, but we will say USDA, but in the committee report, we will say it's via Part 250 CFR.
7 CFR?
7 CFR 250.
Part 251.
Okay, so that, that address? Get it to the food banks.
That's, that's correct, Senator. Which brings the, the first of my recommendation on testimony.
Okay. And the other question I have is, you had mentioned that you weren't sure that you would get administration cost addressed. So that 15%, what you'll do is, is, is each one of you needs 15%, right? You would need 15% or?
See, I live in open center because of depending on the amount of the appropriations. I don't, OCS would not want to take too much. Because we would like to make sure that we put as much as possible on the food purchase and the food banks for the administration.
So from your experience, we're saying about $2 million for a year was needed? But that was during the pandemic or is that?
So... What happened also, Senator, as to what the food bank had mentioned as the predicaments right now? What my office did before the hearing is we ran some analysis comparing 2022 to 2021. What we also see as one of the culprit, why we have a declining food delivery from the federal program is because of the rise in food prices. So if, to give you just a bit of example, right now in 2021, the cost of pasta spaghetti box per unit is 11.29. In 2022, it rose to $18.88. Or another one example is the cost of chicken bone pouch per unit is from 40.75 to 56.27. So the increase in food prices is also affecting the availability of foods.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm going to move us along because we have a little...
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
SB 1115 relating to workers' compensation, increasing the percentage rate of weekly workers' compensation benefits for partially dependent parents of a deceased child from 25 to 50%. The Department of Labor.
Thank you, Chair. The department opposes this measure that would create a disparity in the weekly benefits for the dependents of deceased workers. This measure provides the same benefit calculation rate per parent that was partially supported by the deceased employee financially as one that was wholly supported financially. Section 386-41 of the Workers' Compensation Law provides an interrelated formula of percentages for benefits for dependents. And changing one provision affects the fairness and equity of the benefits of all the other dependents listed. Thank you.
Is there any other, oh, any, anyone else here or on Zoom testify? We have one written, written testimony in support from an individual. Heidi Sitkus. Anyone else? Okay, questions, members?
I have a question for the director. The benefit percentages are those mandated by the federal government?
It's came from, it's by the statute, the percentage.
And who determines the statute? What's, who determines what's fair and equitable? Was it the legislature or the department?
The legislature. They came up with the percentage.
I don't understand your testimony then. If we decide to make a change, it's up to us, isn't it?
Yes.
And if we decided that's fair, then it's up to us, right?
That's, I mean, that's how the calculation is, you know, the calculation is based on the statute.
Oh, you're saying that we can never change the statute?
But...
All we do every day is have bills that change statutes.
Yeah, it's a, you know, that's your, you know, we, we implement. I mean, we, we, based on what's...
Any questions? No questions?
So can you explain why you oppose? I mean, why, so if, if we're saying, you're saying that we can't change the law? Why shouldn't we change it?
I'm not saying you cannot change the law. I'm just saying it's a, I think if you change one, you got to change, it's going to have a chain reaction. You have to, you may, if you change one or, because if you look at the, you know, that you may change the, you know, you, you may have to adjust the others as well.
So can, can you just briefly say why, if we change this law, what would be the impact of that? And why we shouldn't? Give us a reason why we can't change the law.
I'm just...
Can I, can I maybe frame that question? What other section other than 38641? In order to remove any inconsistency? You're, you're saying that this would create an inconsistency? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And so what would be another section of the law that in your opinion would also need to change in order to be, in your opinion, consistent?
I have my, you know, I have the perfect person to answer that. Joanne Videnhart, she's our...
Thank you for that.
Oh, announce yourself, please.
Joanne Videnhart, Administrator for Disability Compensation Division. It actually is within 38641. There was an actuarial study that was put together that looked at wage replacement for those members of the family. So it categorized specific members of the family that the deceased employee provided financial support for. And so it started off with the widow and a child. And a widow and a child from the actuarial study was deemed presumed as fully supported. So they receive 50%. And it is taken upon two-thirds based on the average weekly wage. And then it goes from if there's not a widow and child, it goes down to the parent. And so the parent is either wholly financially supported. So those are mostly that you live in the home with that deceased employee. You were living with them. And they provided your financial, your full financial support versus someone that maybe just received a partial financial support. And that would be something like we see for determinations on, maybe they gave them money for gas on a monthly basis. So that's more of a partial versus the wholly supported. But this actuarial study that was provided, and this was actually over 60 years ago that the study was done, that it categorized the rating of each of the family member and that percentage of how much they should receive.
Is it six years ago or six?
Sixty. It was done in 1963.
Sixty years ago.
Yes.
Did that answer your question, Senator?
You were aware of that, yes. And so with that, it's just if, what director was saying that if we changed from a parent dependency, that could affect, it would give a higher rate to a child than to the widow. And so that's where we're looking at with those percentage. Those rates need to be changed again. And so it's kind of a cascading effect that if you change one, it may affect the other. The intent of the law was to compensate for the financial support.
So has there been any study recently of the workers' comp law?
There has not been. So it is quite old. But that's something that was based on the financial support.
Ms. Jensen?
I'm just saying that this was a statute that was passed creating 60 years ago. Time to change, not when people lived together.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it's worth, worth, you know, looking into.
Right, so our opposition was just, it's not fair to, to give the same percentage to someone that's partially supported financially to someone that's fully supported financially. And so partial is twenty-five, and for a parent that's wholly supported, it's fifty percent. And then the child is forty percent, and a widow is fifty percent. So we start looking at all those different rates. And so should it be looked at as a whole? Or should it just be looked at as this one area?
As Senator Keith Alkerman says, you know, it's about sixty years. There's time to look at it because...
No, I mean, I wasn't focused on the others, mainly because, you know, it's because of the stipulation, problems up, they had no children, so... The only survivors were the...
And so the parent, the, and not to get into the specifics on this one, but we normally have a determination, so there will be a hearing for them to determine the dependency. And then if it is for a parent and they are dependent, then the wage replacement is provided to this parent until those parents pass away. And so it is a long term.
Okay. Thank you. I am remiss. I'm going to go back to the food bank because I, and I anxious, anxiety in the time. I forgot to, also, we're going to go back to SB four sixty. And Clark says that we missed reading out people who may have been on the food bank. So I'm gonna ask for your indulgence in Zoom. Lauren Zerbal from the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
I'm sorry, Chair, they're no longer on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Are you coming for the, okay, come on up and announce yourself for the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Actually, it's Melissa Pavlasek, and I'm here with Amy Marvin from the Hawaii Food Bank. I just wanted to make a very small correction. I know that Amy understood your question about a grant aid to be pertaining to food. And the Hawaii Food Bank does have a small grant aid request in for mobile vehicles. But I just wanted to make sure that we were accurate in telling you that before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have written, written, most, all of these are in support from the Director of Human Services Department, from Health, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, Hawaii Primary Care Association, the L.A. Pailo Social Services, the Hawaii Food Bank, Ulu Po'no Initiative, the Food Basket, Hawaii Hunger Action Network, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Na'nekele Pacific, Hawaii Farm Bureau, and three individuals, all in support. So now I can move on to... Oh, is it, oh, please come up, I'm sorry.
I think our testimony is in, but maybe not.
And you are with?
Nate Hicks, Food Act Advocacy Coordinator with Hawaii Public Health Institute.
Yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Yeah, I just want to stand on our written testimony and support, but also say how important the emergency food system is. It's a social service that is provided. It's not a social service that's currently being funded by the state, despite the state obviously funding dozens of social services in other areas. It's just as important. And right now, it's dependent upon a lot of donations, generous people donating their money, where I don't think we would accept a public education system that was dependent on donations. We shouldn't either for our emergency food system. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to do anything. All right. We're running out of time, so I'm going to go right into decision making. On SB thirteen eleven, this is the repeal of Act one ninety-two and the ERS to divest its, its self-investments. We're going to go with the, the as-is, the amendment with a defective date.
As-is with an amendment?
Uh, just the, no, just no amendment, just the amendment is a defective date.
Oh, so it is...
As-is with a defective.
Okay, so, but I check off...
Amendment.
Okay. You ready to vote?
Yeah, check, so, give me a question. Okay, Chair, Chair votes, I...
Okay. Recommendation is to pass Senate Bill thirteen eleven with amendments. The three members present, any reservations or votes? Recommendation adopted.
So for SB thirteen twelve relating to the employee's retirement system, clarifies the ERS eligibility requirement for service-connected disability and accidental benefits. Again, the Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments with a defective effective date. Chair votes, I...
You heard the recommendation to pass Senate Bill thirteen twelve with amendments. Any reservations, objections for all the members present?
Uh, this is the one on the ERS, the service-connected disability. Passing it.
We're... Any objections or reservations?
Do they have money appropriations?
No, it's just a definition.
Okay, just checking. Wrong bill, sorry.
Okay.
And... Okay, I, oh, that's an I. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, SB thirteen eighty-five. This is the wage in our law. Expands the coverage for employees and employers, covered on minimum wage, overtime, and record-keeping requirements of Chapter three eighty-seven. And it deletes the guaranteed monthly compensation of two thousand or more. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments, which is with a defective effective date.
Okay.
Chair votes, I...
We're voting on Senate Bill thirteen eighty-five. You heard the recommendation to pass with amendments. Any reservations or no votes? Hearing none? Hearing none?
Hi?
Okay. My recommendation is adopted. I, I just didn't want to pass it if we didn't... Thank you, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB four sixty relating to food banks appropriates funds to the Office of Community Services to fund the purchase, storage, transportation to food banks in the state. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to add language to clarify that distribution is through the Department of Agriculture's law, giving them an exemption to go to food banks, seven CFR Part two fifty, and clarifying language that administering agencies shall use no more than fifteen percent of their allocation to administer the program with a defective effective date. Chair votes, I...
Can you, we're voting?
Just a discussion, I, I'm not sure if, I wasn't here when they had the discussion, but I'd just like you guys to know that when we, they take our food to the neighbor island, there is cost on the travel and shipping through their expense when they go and service our neighbor island. So I just wanted to make sure that we know that to the next...
No, it's, it's in the bill.
Okay.
For distribution.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
So any reservations or no votes for Senate Bill four sixty to pass with, with amendments? Hearing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay. Senate Bill one 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 five relating to workers' compensation, increasing the percentage rate of weekly workers' compensation benefits for partially dependent parents of a deceased child from twenty-five to fifty percent. The Chair's recommendation is to defer because of the information that we heard from workers' comp. I do want to say that workers' compensation disability division should be looking into updating our workers' comp laws. Look forward to seeing what you can do in terms of the change in demographics. And with that...
I'm gonna...
Are you gonna?
Vote W R.
I'm not voting, I'm differing.
Oh, you're differing?
Yeah, I can't, can't...
Well, I would like to repress the vote.
Oh, okay, so we can vote. Okay. Our Chair will take a vote on what you want.
No, no, you can pass as-is. I mean, we're gonna vote it down, right?
Yeah.
Wait. Yeah, I think so. That's probably the easiest way.
All right. With that, this concludes the Labor and Technology Committee hearing. Thank you for your participation.